All right. As long as our camera person is ready. I'll call the meeting to order. Rise. Behind us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have any visitors tonight. Warnings going around, ready to sign.
Mike, there are no additional warrants for this meeting. Obviously, we have another regular meeting on May twenty-fourth. So, there was no pressing need for us to catch up with any bills in between. But we prepared on Friday.
Okay. Public comment? Hearing none? Excuse me, I skipped over. I had a sequence here. I would ask for... I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes for the density council meeting on April twenty-sixth. I think Lowell made the motion. Randy made the second. Omission, corrections, or error? Anybody? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Still carried? Anything quick on the budget?
Yeah, one thing, I apologize. You may be wondering why this budget's eleven pages long. And there's actually a provision in the software to suppress zeros. And the button didn't get hit. And so, you have every line item that's ever been created back to two thousand and five. And when you see a zero in the budgeted and a zero in the expense, it's a line item from a prior budget. So, sorry about the waste of paper. But if you're wondering about old abandoned line items, there they are. Anyway, Mike, I did thoroughly go through their budget again today. And obviously, as rough as a winter as we had, I still feel okay. The storm was...hit us. We may be eligible for some federal money for reimbursements on the damage that occurred to Green Street. We'll learn more about that soon. We're communicating with the state. But really, no surprises. And we just hope that there aren't any more weather-related problems. We've had enough of that this year.
Sure.
Soon, I'll be able to start working on year-end projections.
Okay, great. All righty. I sent out a copy of Mel's list and really haven't heard about the adjusted meetings. So, I take it everybody is okay with that. So, those dates will...are on file and we'll go to that calendar. Any questions, Mel, on the budget? None? Any committee reports? I'd ask you keep in briefs. Starting with Lowell, anything?
Yes, the fishing derby is moving along. They've asked the Rotary if it's okay if they do a bobber race, kind of to rival the rubber ducky race. And Rotary was very, very happy that they asked them and said they would appreciate that. So, stay tuned on information about that.
Little fundraising, huh?
Yeah.
Good. Excellent. Joe, anything?
The Recreation Committee met week ago Saturday to tour the city park facilities. And we met again last week to sort of summarize that visit and start to think about the list of priorities for recommendation to Mel.
Very good, thank you. Ziggy? No report. Randy?
Going to report that I've been working with Rhonda Williams on the farmer's market. And she's moving it right along. And she's also come up with a new...she was approached by farmersmarket.com. And they basically advertise the products of the Virgens people that go to the Virgens market. And then, they can preorder or ahead of time so they can pick it up. Just at the beginning stages of it, I'll know more on Saturday.
Excellent. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Peter doesn't have a committee yet?
No, I do not.
We'll fix that.
I'm sure you will.
Okay. Public comment? Go back there, none, no public comment? Boys and Girls Club, Mel, six A.
Yeah, as I mentioned in my cover memo, I met with Bill Benton about a week ago. And the Boys and Girls Club has decided to, I'll say withdrawn or defer their request relative to any portion of the eight point one three acres. Bill said that they have lost some of their funding and therefore making a project of this nature a bit ambitious for them. Also, obtaining...so, they lost some of their regular funding, is my point, Mike. And so, therefore, they really have decided to defer any kind of capital project for them. I think what Bill said was three years. I don't know that I could hold him to that. But they have decided to withdraw their request relative to their interest in this property. So, this will be removed from the agenda as of tonight.
Okay. All right. Then, item six B, Mayor Building revolving loan fund.
Yeah, I issued...I wrote a memo for the board relative to the revolving loan fund committee. And would propose that the council appoint the following people to a...to your...two things. Actually, I would request that amendment...that an amendment be made to the policy removing the city manager as an ex officio voting member of the committee, replaced by the city treasurer as an ex officio voting member. I just feel that I should not be accepting applications, reviewing applications, and recommending action on an application and then voting on my own recommendation. So, I'd like to step aside from being a voting member of that committee, replaced by the city treasurer. And relative to the other members that need to be named, obviously, with...if the council approved this change, Joan Devine, as city treasurer, would be the ex officio voting member. So, it's because of her position, not because of her name. The other folks, sorry about the misspelling of Colette, I just noticed that. But the other people that I would recommend to make up the other six members on the seven-member committee are Christine Colette, Lynn Jackson Donnelly, Clara Ziggy Como, Kevin Rooney. On that note, the partnership did nominate Kevin to that position. Scott Gaines, representing the Chamber, Virgens Chamber, and Henry Broughton as the Citizen at Large. So, I'm looking for approval to make that minor change in the existing policy and approve the slate of the other six recommended members.
Make set motion. Randy made the motion, second. Lowell made the second. Other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Still carried?
And Mike, on that same note, I do plan on getting this group together ASAP. Not that we have an application in our hand, but I want the...this committee to review the existing policy and also develop some kind of a marketing strategy for these loans. One of the things, I mentioned this to the City Council before, that we learned with the two applications for the Community Development Fund, one by the...one for the senior housing project and the other for the John Graham Shelter, that if we don't have...if we did not have an active loan, a new loan, within three years of the date of a grant application, we are required to use revolving loan funds towards a grant project. So, it would behoove us to get this money out in the city ASAP. So, this committee is going to be immediately put into action with those two tasks. And then, hopefully, the next steps would be to have applications. And I think the way the policy is, I think it comes back to this board. But anyway, I want the committee to work on that policy. And if there is any changes, obviously, they'll come back to this board for recommended change.
Okay, very good. Chris, thank you for continuing to serve our city.
I couldn't believe it jumped off the page, so, sorry.
You'll fix that. Okay. City Managers' Report.
Mike, I'm going to defer my report. Other than to say one thing is that I did receive a permit to open up our stump dump on an event basis. I know that there's folks out there that rely on that. We did purchase...jointly purchase a chipper with the town of Pantin and Addison. We're working out the loan arrangements, if you will, with the Addison County Solid Waste District, if we go that way. So, anyway, those two things kind of go hand in hand. So, we are going to be back in the stump dump business legally with a permit. So, we just need to...I spoke to Jimmy Laro the other day. We're not ready to schedule an actual date because we just...we need to really understand how we're going to supervise that facility. You can't just open up the gate and expect everybody's going to follow the rules. You know, it needs to be staffed. And also, the permit requires us to chip and remove within a thirty-day period. So, it's not just piling up some brush. It actually is a solid waste facility, so...
So, are there other items other than branches that...or sticks that you can bring there?
No.
Leaves?
Leaves, yes.
You can?
Yep, yard waste, yard waste is what it is.
And grass clippings?
You know, I would think that that might be okay. I mean, ultimately, what we need to find is a home for the material. And, you know, whether or not it might go to Foster Brothers to be used in their compost operation, we...you know, the problem, Mike, is that we need to...this is a...has a categorical... it actually isn't a categorical certification. It's an event certification permit. And you actually...it's not just about the event. It's about the solid waste and where it's going to go and where it's going to be handled. So, we need to...we need to have a plan and not just pile it up and forget about it.
And as part of that plan, do we know if it has to stay within Addison County or could it go anywhere?
I think it can go anywhere.
Because I don't know how they're treating it.
The permit doesn't have any restriction on that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Mel, on that? If not, eight A, new business, Vermont Gas, letter of support.
Yeah, Mike, I put this draft together. And as many of you know, when I write things, I have extremely thick skin. I have no problem with anybody editing anything that I write. So, this letter does, if approved, in some form. And feel free to make any kinds of edits, you know, amongst...if the six of you can agree on something. I need to be able to get this finalized in the morning, if it's your...if it's your pleasure, so that it can be submitted for their hearing tomorrow night. I can't make the...I can't make the hearing tomorrow night. Joan and I are working on swim team sign-ups at the elementary school. So, anyway, I'm open to any criticism or changes or anything you'd like. Obviously, this is really totally focused on Vermont Gas's ability to create this fund. This is not about a specific project. But obviously, you know, based on their testimony, this fund appears certainly to be first used for an extension of the...of Vermont Gas to Virgens and Middlebury. You know, relative to whether or not it will serve every household in Virgens, we do not know that at this point. Obviously, this...the creation of this fund allows them to move further with their...further with their design and permitting. This is obviously not the last opportunity for the City Council to comment on their endeavor.
Okay, first off, before we ask to see if there's approval, are there...if you were...had the opportunity to change anything in this letter, does anybody have any comments about that? The changes? Hearing none? Now?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
It's a question, a minor question. Economics are very positive?
Good question, Peter, good one, all right. Of course, Jason and Carrie when we need them.
Anyway, I checked that out.
Okay, so, it sounds like there needs to be one...
We need...yeah, we need Mrs. Fisher.
Could you repeat that from the table?
Sort that out.
Say that again, Peter, so...
It's the...
First sentence in paragraph three. We don't know if it should be an is or an are. And we'll sort that out. Joan and I will battle this out in the morning.
Okay, other than that, comments?
I think it's a good letter.
I don't think we need...do we need a motion?
I think you do.
I'd ask for motion. Randy makes the motion?
I think it's our.
Ziggy seconded it?
I think it is.
I saw Randy saying before I heard you speak. Okay, Randy made the motion, Ziggy seconded it. And comments?
Excuse me, the motion is to support...go ahead and support this letter, okay.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Still carried?
As soon as we sort out that.
Yep, once we figure out if it is or are.
No, no, I didn't. Should, but...
Okay. B, Mel?
B, as my memo indicated, I'd like to defer that until the next meeting. George and I have discussed this at some...at some minor length. But we'll report back to the board at the end of the month.
Okay, very good. See? Unison, offer to purchase fifty-year lease.
Yeah, I had mentioned this...I mentioned this a little bit in passing back...that must've been two or three months ago. And frankly, I felt that I might not ever hear from this gentleman again. And we did follow up with a...with an email a couple of weeks ago and this proposal. And I can tell you that, you know, the proposal to purchase our lease rights, you know, for half a million dollars or more, I mean, on the surface, it sounds like something that you want to take a closer look at. But the money doesn't even come close at that. It's a fifty-year...it's a fifty-year lease. You know, so, you know, the economics are such that, you know, I don't think it's anything that we're interested at those prices, you know, and so...
This is only six and a half years. This is only paying like six and a half years.
Correct, correct. So, the guy...I will tell you that the...you know, this company does this for a business. I mean, I think that typically, this company goes around and purchases leases, possibly from farmers who may have a...who may have an antenna on their silo. And obviously, if some farmer is in need of some immediate capital, you know, the thought of selling that lease to a company like Unison, you know, may make some sense for them. In our instance, you know, it really doesn't make any sense to me at the number that he gave us. I will tell you that Bill...can't remember his last name, but, you know, he knew...he knew that this was a low-ball offer. And I said, well, you know, even though this was an unsolicited request on our part, you know, I really feel that, you know, that, you know, if somebody...I suppose if somebody wanted to make a bid on City Park, I probably would put...I probably would shred that. But, you know, relative to our cell tower leases, this is a company that does this as a part of their business plan, all right? And I just felt that I couldn't just simply shred it. I mentioned it to the City Council, and so, I'm just forwarding this on. And it's really up to you whether or not you want to just take no action, or you want to reject this offer, whether or not we want to relay a message to the gentleman that this offer is rejected. And any counteroffer really would need to move tremendously for us to consider it. I just...you know, maybe there's a number out there, you know, that might work. But this number isn't even close.
Any comment from any of the council members? Go with Joe first, Randy second?
Just a couple of questions. One, this technology gain, I mean, it's strictly my opinion, based on nothing and other...and no facts, in that he makes a statement about the developing of satellite technology.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's always been sort of my feeling that these cell phone towers are going to be going away at some point because satellite technology's going to be... and the rapid rate of technology. I was curious about, in these leases, if cell technology does go away and they pull their antennas off, does those rental payments immediately cease?
I'd have to, you know...I negotiated the first one and the last one, all right? I didn't negotiate the middle ones. I'm happy to look at that, Joe, to see what the escape clause is in there. You know, I think that might be, you know, might be important, you know, obviously, if there is. I really...I will tell you that I received a letter from AT&amp;T or some company that was contracted to attempt to renegotiate leases where they wanted to reduce our... and that was the first one that we had, where they wanted to reduce our lease by forty percent. And I just wrote him an email back and said that I wouldn't consider any reduction. So, that, to me, that kind of tells me that they're locked in for that period of time. But without me really digging into it...but obviously, let's say if some company went bankrupt. I mean, if they went bankrupt, we're out, you know, there's no question about that. But I think that...I think that they're locked. But I could confirm that by spending a little more, like, more time with them. But keep in mind, you know, what they're looking at here is a fifty-year lease. The longest terms of two of the companies were twenty-five years. So, basically, this purchase would allow them to renegotiate that...those second and third terms, if you will.
I just...Randy, then?
Absolutely.
Peter, Randy?
Mel, if they want to put a few more zeros at the end of that number, so it was worthwhile, a worthwhile number, I'd entertain a ton.
In the same vein, the economics seem fairly ridiculous to me. Trading four point six million dollars for five hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I did...I did tell them, I said, you know, they're going to beat you up pretty bad, Bill, when you see this number. But, you know, it's my job to forward these kinds of things to the board.
So...
I would move that we reject this offer.
By the second?
I'll second it.
Joe made the second? Further discussion?
Now, this lease is for fifty years?
This proposal is for fifty.
For them?
For them, that's correct.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All those in favor of denying this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Message will be sent.
Okay.
Be claiming it. Okay. Yep. I'd ask for a motion to adjourn the City Council meeting. Lowell makes that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll take a brief recess and be back here in about seven minutes. I'd ask people to take the seats, please. I know Greg likes to stand because he...somebody says he's going to grow taller. He's got proof of it. He's already grown through his hair. Oh, Greg. He said I could pick on him.
You know, if you set up the lions, you'd be fine.
That's all right, I'll pay it. First off, I want to welcome everybody to the Virgens Public Information Hearing on the School Unification. I prepared a written statement so that I try to get all my bases covered. First off, I've heard many say that tonight's meeting is going to be hostile. Gentlemen in the back, you're in charge of taking care of that, doesn't happen, okay? You're in charge. Got my back. That is not the purpose. So, I'm certain we came together to make a...make this a productive meeting. What I'll need to keep in mind, this meeting is to provide and obtain information, answer questions, so that we can make an informative decision when we go to the polls on May seventeenth. Let's all focus on being part of the solution. Little bit of housekeeping. If you haven't done it, please turn off pagers. Whoops. Or put your cell phones on private. Thank you for doing so. You...first off, you'll need to hold all questions until the presentations have been presented. We'll open that up at the end. I'd ask those visitors here tonight from other cities and towns to hold off and allow citizens of Virgens to ask their questions first. Each person has two minutes to pose their question to the presenters. And you will ask, you know, you'll tell what question the presenter is, okay? This meeting is scheduled to end at eight thirty. The first presentation will be by City Manager Mel Hawley. Mel?
Thanks, Mayor Danels. Hello, everyone. Surprise, surprise, I am only going to talk about taxes. The Kathy Cannon at the superintendent's office and I communicate on a fairly regular basis. And if I can find this mouse, here it is. We exchanged a few spreadsheets. I do take the liberty to change most of them, Kathy.
If anybody's having trouble hearing, just keep up and we'll try to get Mel to adjust his volume and voice. The microphone in front of him is just recording to the TV.
This spreadsheet here is...I know you're going to have a little difficult time reading some of these...some of this...some of this information on the screen. But basically, you have the towns of Addison, Ferrisburg, Pantin, Waltham, and Virgens. The base year rate, what that base year rate is, is that's the anticipated rate that you're going to have this coming fiscal year. You all voted on budgets in March. All of those school budgets got approved. And Kathy has gone through the math to find out what those new rates are going to be for the ensuing year. You'll notice that it says that these rates are not modified by the CLA, which stands for the Common Level of Appraisal. And that's to make sure that, you know, when we're trying to compare Addison to Virgens or Ferrisburg to Waltham, we're working from what we call a pre-CLA adjustment. So, for instance, in the case of the city of Virgens, our CLA for the coming year is one hundred and one point oh one percent. So, if Kathy's number is correct, at one point two three one, that is not what is going to appear on your bill. What is going to appear on your bill is one point two three one divided by one hundred and one point oh one percent. And that's going to equal like one point two two three. I'm going to let Joan do that math before she sends out those bills. Obviously, under Act one fifty-three, which is the law that provided for incentives for school districts to unify, and I don't want to state to you that I know or have ever read Act one fifty-three from front to back, but I certainly do know some of the basics that are within that particular law. One is, I believe that once a district is unified, they get a one-time check of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Another thing that a unified district, when setting the rates, is that if a municipality's rate is expected to go up, or if a municipality's rate is expected to go down, no rate can go up or down by more than five percent in any given year. The incentives are...start out at being eight cents for the first year of unification, six cents often the unified rate. For those municipalities that are going up, there is an incentive of eight cents for the first year of unification, six for the second, four for the third, and two for the second. All that this chart does is, it really does not predict a unified budget. What it does is it just totals up the budgets from the Addison Central School, the Ferrisburg Central School, the Virgens Union Elementary School, and the Virgens Union High School, net of revenues, and simply divided by the number of students. and simply divided by the number of, uh, students total amongst those to come up with a hypothetical, if you will, rate, alright? So, in essence, the first year of unification, if the budgets for those four schools do not change at all, and the student counts of those four schools do not change at all, Kathy predicts that that rate is going to be one point three zero one. And if those budgets never change over the next five years, and the student counts never change over the next five years, the unified rate stays at one point three zero one. Obviously, in the case of Virgin's, our base rate is one point two three one. With that eight cent incentive goes to one point two two one. Following year goes to one point two four one, one point two six, one point two eight one. And then when all incentives are gone, the, the city educational rate, if, and I use the word if, if there is no change in any of the budgets in aggregation, and there is no change in the number of students attending those, because homestead rates are totally based on per pupil spending. I think lots of times, people don't understand that, that when they, uh, read an article in the newspaper and it says that a school budget is up by five percent. And people think, well, it's up by five percent, my taxes are going up. That's not necessarily the case, because it's all about per pupil spending. So it is conceivable for budgets to go up, students' counts to go up further than budgets, and your taxes actually go down. Conversely, budgets can actually go down, but if your student count goes down lower than your budget rate, your per pupil cost goes up. And so conceivably, your tax bill can go up when budgets go down. It's all about per pupil spending. I know the top is just a little bit chopped off. You know, years ago, uh, the way the property was taxed is, everybody's property value went into the grand list. You found out how much taxes the city needs, how much taxes the elementary school needed, how much taxes the, the high school needed, and you simply took those tax needs and you divided it by the grand list, and you came up with a tax rate. It was real simple. And it was, it was real simple for many, many years, until Act sixty, followed by Act sixty-eight went into effect. And now everybody must file, if they have an owner-occupied property, must file a homestead declaration. And what the result of that is, is yes, we only have one grand list, but it really is made up of two parts. We have the homestead part, and we have the, what's called the non-residential part. Apartment buildings, they sound residential to me, but to the state of Vermont, they're called non-residential. Basically, it's divided between homestead properties and non-homestead properties. Homestead property is defined by a property that you own and you live in, minus any portion of that home that you live in that is rented to others, or if more than twenty-five percent of your property that you live in is used for business purposes, that is excluded from your homestead value. So it's very possible that you could have a home that's worth two hundred thousand dollars, but if you operate your business in forty percent of that home, your homestead is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and your business portion is eighty thousand dollars. And so therefore, you pay the homestead rate only on the hundred and twenty. Your property tax adjustment is only based on the hundred and twenty. So up at the top, you can see a little bit of the chop off of two thousand eleven. The city of Virgin's grand list is about, it is about, it is two hundred and fourteen million, eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars today, pre-agreements, that's coming up in June. The hundred and twenty-two million is the, uh, amount of value of our homesteads, and the ninety-two million dollars is the value of our non-residential property. What I've attempted to do here is, if the, if the budgets from the five schools do not change, and if the student count stays the same, we can use the initial chart that we had to calculate what the education taxes are on homesteads from the city of Virgin's. And the, the chart in the middle shows what the homestead education taxes would be billed as those incentives go away, on the assumption that there's no change in any budgets. And as you can see, the, in FY two thousand and twelve, uh, there is no, uh, there is actually a decrease proposed in the, uh, in the rate from a dollar twenty-three one down to a dollar twenty-two one, and thus saving collectively the homestead property owners twelve thousand dollars. The following year, uh, two cents of the incentives goes away, the tax rate goes up a penny from the base. There goes the twelve thousand dollars. The following year, when they, you lose another two cents, you lose another thirty-six thousand. When you lose to, when you are down to two cents of an incentive, uh, it's sixty-one thousand dollars. And then when all incentives are gone, on the assumption that all of the budgets stay the same, I know you're gonna get sick and tired of hearing me say this, if all the budgets stay the same, and the student counts stay the same, the rate of a dollar thirty point one, it makes it so that collectively, the homestead property owners in the city of Virgin's pay eighty-five thousand, five hundred and seven dollars in additional taxes per year. I will tell you that about forty percent of the people in Virgin's benefit from estate payment adjustment. And it is true that the eighty-five thousand dollars of additional taxes that are billed under this example, that is true. But I will tell you that, like I say, forty to fifty percent of the property owners in Virgin's benefit from estate payment adjustment. So collectively, the property owners of Virgin's would not feel all eighty-five thousand dollars. Some of that would indeed be offset by, by payments through the property tax adjustment. The bottom part of the chart just attempts, attempts to just pull one house out, like, somebody saying, okay, Mel, eighty-five thousand dollars, big deal. What does it mean to me? What does it mean to my house? So what I've attempted to do is to basically pull out that house, a two hundred thousand dollar home, find out what your education taxes are for base year, one, two thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars. And every year, as those incentives go away, if there's no change in the budget, and if there's no change in this number of student count, you can see what the increase, increased taxes are going to be. Well, I wanna read something from this card, uh, that many of you got in the mail the other day. Uh, just gonna read one, one sentence here. It says, "In the first four years of unification, Virgin's taxpayers will see reduced education tax rates. In future years, tax rates would stabilize due to economies of scale and a unified union." I became curious about that statement, alright? And so what I did is I took this, uh, spreadsheet here, uh, that showed what the current net budgets are for Addison, Ferrisburg, VUEES, and VUHS, to see how that derives this unified rate of one point three oh one. Basically, the way Vermont worked, as you know, Greg, uh, the legislature adopts a base rate, alright? And the base rate currently is eighty-six cents. Currently, eighty-six cents buys you eight thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars of a student's per pupil cost. The legislature voted to increase that eighty-seven cents, eighty-six cents to eighty-seven cents for next year, but it's still eight thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars. That, that extra penny on the tax rate does not buy anybody anything. My guess is, is that more than likely, Greg, the, uh, the education fund isn't quite as strong as one would like it. So what they do is they increase the rate, so that when that extra penny gains, uh, it makes, actually makes the education fund be a little bit more solvent. So, when you, and when you aggregate the four schools' budgets and divide by the twelve hundred and six students, you end up with a melded per pupil cost of twelve thousand, seven hundred and six, six, seventy-six dollars, which is a hundred and forty-nine point five three pers, point five three percent of the base. And if the base is eighty-seven cents, you multiply that times a hundred and forty-nine dollars and, a hundred and forty-nine point five three percent, that's how you derive that one point three oh one, okay? Now, based on this card here, that says that in the first four years of unification, Virgin's taxpayers will see reduced education tax rates. I thought, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna calculate what this means. What does this mean? If we, the city of Virgin's tax rate, education tax rate today is one point two three one, and if this card is absolutely correct, and everybody is committed to this card, that means that the city of Virgin's tax rate, which is one, going to be one point two three one in the coming year, should be, based on this card, one point two three one, the first year of unification, the second year, the third year, the fourth year, and the fifth year. And so what I did is I reversed the numbers in this spreadsheet to find out how much do these budgets have to be reduced, so that the city of Virgin's taxpayers' rate stays at one point two three one. So as you can see, obviously, with the incentives, the first year, assuming no change in budget, assuming no change in number of students, the one thirty drops down to one point two two one. Obviously, that's below, no harm, no foul. You lose two cents. And therefore, the next, the following year, to meet this, meet this guarantee, I'm gonna say, you need to have a rate of one point two nine one, minus six cents, equals one point two three one. And when you backfeed it into the spreadsheet, it shows that the budgets collectively need to be redo, need to go down by a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. The following year, because you lose two cents, the unified rate needs to go to one point two seven one for the city to get to the one point two three one, and it takes almost two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in budget reductions to accomplish that. The next year, FY two thousand and sixteen, when you lose another two cents, collectively, those budgets have to lose another, not the same two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, but another two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And then the last year, when you have no incentives to be able to get, to get that rate for the city of Virgin's to one point two three one, it's another two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And therefore, when all incentives are gone, for the taxpayers of Virgin's to have the same rate as the base year rate, there needs to be eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, thirty-two dollars cut collectively from the four schools' budgets.
As I said, please hold on to your questions until the very end.
Um, next person that will be, uh, talking as a citizen and a petitioner, yeah, petitioner, Clara Como.
Can everyone hear me from there?
No.
Mark?
Have you got a mic?
No. Ziggy, would you please go up in the middle?
Okay.
Thank you. Watch the wires.
One of the reasons why I got into this, for this petition, is mainly what Mel was talking about. Then I, I had a chart that I looked at, and just figuring out what I could see on that chart, obviously, Addison and Ferrisburg was gonna be going down, Virgin's, Waltam, Patton was gonna be going up. I thought about this, and I, at the time, I said, well, I have a lot of things going on. And then I went out, I happened to run into somebody out in Ferrisburg, coming from that deli, and they're good friends of mine son. And they said to me, hey, Ziggy, thanks. I said, so what? Well, you and Addison consolidated, helping us pay this one point six million debt load. I just looked at him, and all of a sudden, it just clicked in my head, like, what's going on here? I came back and I talked to Mel, I went over the figures again, and myself, and we're going up. I mean, taxes in Virgin's will be going up. We paid eleven point, eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars for a student. No offense, Addison's paying fifteen thousand something. And in the middle, at the end of the four years, if we're gonna be equal, obviously, something's gonna happen here. And why I got into this, and no offense, Andy, but there was an article that was put in the Addison Independent the week before, saying how the, how the taxes were gonna be dropping in the towns. And then, I guess you were notified that possibly that wasn't gonna happen. And then there was a vote, then there was a, uh, retraction put in on the Monday paper, the day before the vote. But it was not very big, and it was not on the front page. By the time people, some of these people saw this, it was too late, they had already voted. I had been petitioning around, and I have talked to a lot of people. I never asked them anything, I just, all I talked about was the chart, and what I felt, felt that this is the way, it was really not good information. I talked to many people who told me they were still confused. And when they voted on this, was because of an article that they saw that they were gonna be saving money. I never asked him, they told me. So as things were going on, um, I got enough for the names, and I turned in the petition, turned in the names, but then I had people still calling me. So, uh, this is one of the things, I mean, right now, I don't, it's just mind-boggling to tell that we're saving money, when really, maybe some towns are, but we're not. I talked to a gentleman that is a legislator, nobody's, not from this area. I talked to him, I don't know, two, three, four weeks ago, and I asked him about the consolidation up there. You know, what have you heard about it? Well, he said it was mint in one time, but he hasn't heard that much about it anymore, he says. And I, so I turned around and I asked him again. So you're, I said, so nobody is pushing, you guys aren't pushing anybody to get this done and get it going? He said, and Greg, you can verify one way or the other what this gentleman was saying. He said, right now, we got more on our plate than worrying about consolidation of schools. And he said, I don't know of anybody talking about it lately. So I don't know if they've been talking about it you, but I don't know if this guy was just, but that's what he informed me.
True.
It's true. So anyways, after hearing that, I realized there are some towns now talking about consolidating up north. And I feel, just the way things are going right now, I'm not afraid to, to pull back the bragging that we're number one that's doing this. I feel that maybe we oughta let the other towns step up and let them do it first. And let's learn by their success and, and by their errors, and at their expense, not our expense. I feel right now that I, I just, it's just mind-boggling. And I think that, you know, from what's been going on, I, I, I'm still going out. I don't care till the day we vote, because I feel what's going on here is not right. That's all I got to say.
Next person that will be presenting is, uh, UU Board Chair, Kristen Barso.
While they're getting the PowerPoint set up, I would like to just introduce myself. I am Chris Bristow. I've served on school boards in this area for fourteen years. Um, I am currently the chair of the Virgin's Union High School Board, and the chair of the Virgin, uh, the Addison Northwest Supervisory Union Unified Union Subcommittee. Um, we also have here with us Cheryl Brinkman. She's the chair of the Virgin's Union Elementary Board. She's on the Unified Union Subcommittee, as well as Adella Langrock. She's also on, she served for many years on the Ferrisburg Central School Board, um, but she is also on the Unified Union Subcommittee. Um, before I actually start this PowerPoint... Um, before I actually start this PowerPoint, there's one thing that I want people to keep in mind, that we as elected board officials, school board officials, our job as a collective goal is to make sure that our children in our districts get the absolute best possible education that we can give them. Now, obviously, we have to take into account the economic concerns of our taxpayers. We have to follow the demands and regulations that the state and federal government puts on us. That's a lot on our plate, but we still have the goal of giving our children the very best education they can get. And we as an Addison Northwest Supervisory Union Board, which is a collection of all the boards here in town, in our five towns, unanimously, more than once, as you all know, um, have agreed that turning our Supervisory Union into a Unified Union would help to continue that excellent education for our children. We feel that we can be more economically sound in our schools. We feel that we can be more efficient with the way we govern. And another very large part of that goal is we have three elementary schools that go into the same seventh grade. We feel, and it is our choice here, uh, to send those children into the seventh grade on a level playing field. That means they have to have the same opportunities if you took the elementary school. Doesn't mean the schools have to be exactly the same, but they have to have the same opportunities. So when they hit seventh grade, there aren't some kids that are behind and other kids being held back while those guys catch up. So, now we go on to the Unified Union. So the first question people ask, you, you did win, you got a yes vote, March of two thousand and ten. Two towns, uh, voted, tried to re-vote it, uh, and because of one town did actually overturn the vote, um, people wanna know, why are you going back again a year later? There's several reasons. A very big reason is at the end of June in two thousand and ten, the state legislature enacted Act one fifty-three. In Act one fifty-three, it, it says, all supervisory unions must discuss the possibility of mergers by December of two thousand and ten. Now, I know we've already done it here a lot of times, but we're trying to follow our state regulations, so we put a committee together again and we started to take a look at it. When you look at Act one fifty-three, you further see that there are many incentives. The state is recognizing that they feel it could be a good thing for ESUs or, uh, different districts to form what they're calling REDS, Regional Education Districts. We're calling it here specifically Unified Union. But some of the, uh, some of the incentives are, that are included are no school closures in the first four years, reduced homestead tax rates in the first four years, and also the small school grants, which are slated to disappear in two years, would continue for the next five. The next thing we looked at are the results of that March ten, uh, or March two thousand and ten vote. If you look at this, has it stopped moving? I'm sorry. If you look at this, all five towns voted yes, we wanna join the Unified Union. Out of the five towns, four of them voted overwhelmingly, two to one. That means the voters who care enough about this issue to come out and vote absolutely said, we wanna be part of that Unified Union. And now you know that the next slide, uh, goes over the results of a re-vote. Two towns, Virgin's and the Addison, petitioned for a re-vote. It was put out for a re-vote again in May of two thousand and ten. Addison was able to turn that re-vote around, Virgin's was not. You have to have a certain number of, uh, certain number of no, no's from the original no's uh, in order to turn that around, so Virgin's is not able to do that. But because Addison did turn that vote around, it turned it around for all five towns. And I wanna put up here also the results of the May two thousand and ele- uh, May?
March.
Oh, March two thousand and eleven, sorry, um, vote. Again, these numbers are very, very similar to the town, town meeting day vote a year prior. The voters that cared about this issue, that got out to vote overwhelmingly voted yes. Again, four of those five towns with a two to one margin. Also, it's important to me to note that the three towns, the town of Hampton, the town of Walton, and the city of Virgin's, for all stakeholders in the elementary school, um, Virgin's Union Elementary School, all voted two to one to join the Unified Union. The next thing we started to look at is the enrollment trends. In the last ten years at Addison Northwest, we have lost over two hundred students. And as Mel was talking about, as those student numbers go down, the cost per pupil goes up. The next slide shows what happens in each of the individual schools. Um, and if you look at Virgin's Union Elementary School, in that same ten, ten years, we've lost a hundred students. That's a lot of students when you only have a three hundred student base. So the next thing that we looked at were some different cost implications. Um, as the cost of everything rises, the state of Vermont has started to look very closely at the cost of education. They keep talking about cost containment and trying to tell us in our districts how much money we can spend on our students. In FY two thousand and eleven, which is our current budget year that we're doing, yeah, they asked us to level fund our budget from the previous year. Two thousand and twelve, which is the budget that everybody just voted on in March, uh, they asked us to further reduce that by between two and three percent. We were able to do that in our schools, but not always easily. Some of the schools are a little luckier than others, because sometimes you can have, you know, a tr- natural attrition. A teacher retires, you can, because of declining enrollment, maybe you don't have to, uh, rehire that teacher. So that helps reduce your budget right there. Other, uh, schools are not so lucky and they had to reduce some programs. For FY two thousand and thirteen, we are anticipating another two percent reduction in funding, which will carry over into a reduction in our budgets. I'm not saying that reductions aren't good, we wanna keep costs down, but at what cost? To the school. The final thing is obviously what we've talked about before is increasing costs. Fuel, wow, went up quite a lot, continues to rise, hopefully will, we're hearing it's coming down. Also, decreasing resources, an example is that small schools grant that we rely on here, um, at Addison Northwest, that's going away. Okay, so let's go back to the basics. What does governance mean? As I said in the beginning, our job as a board is to oversee the business of the school. We have to, uh, to come up with a budget, implement the budget, we take care of, you know, how ma- the maintenance of the building runs, we, you know, hire teachers and all of those things. And we look at program, all the things that actually run the school. So what is our structure now? Well, we currently are three elementary schools, one high school. All four of those are part of the Supervisory Union, um, that is called the Addison Northwest. Each of those schools and the Addison Northwest has a board. Each of those boards have to produce a budget for every year. And each of, and because of that, we also have audits for each of those budgets. We have transportation contracts, we have insurance contracts, we have meetings, um, and all of these different things. And they're all individual. Now, we are all part of the Addison Northwest budget, but each of those individual schools runs their own school system. There are lines between them. So there's services, things that cannot be shared quite as easily if we are a UU. So if we be, if we were becoming a Unified Union, we then would have one budget, one audit, et cetera. And we then have a unified district that is prepaid through twelve. All twelve hundred of our students would be in that, in what Mel was talking about, the budget, you know, dividing the students into the budget and so forth. There'll be twelve hundred students instead of, say, Virgin's Elementary, we're going two hundred and thirty students. And it reruns one year. That one board is made up of twelve individuals from all five towns. We do that based on population. State statute says how many per population you need to have to represent. Based on this, Ferrisburg and Virgin's each get four representatives. Addison gets two, Walton and Hampton each get one. So how do we come up with a structure for the Unified Union? Uh, in Title sixteen, seven oh six B, it talks about a study committee. Form a committee of, um, members to take a look at, um, things like, who do you wanna be in this Unified Union? Uh, how many people on the board? Where's the board coming from? What's the representation? You know, all of those different things, and formulate what we call the Articles Agreement. It's twelve different steps, and that becomes the formation of sort of the basis of the Unified Union that is going to form in your union board. Um, the Articles of Agreement are sent to a lawyer. The lawyer looks them over, make, we make changes based on that. Because we did this two years in a row, we made changes from the first year to the second year, because we heard from different people, um, in the towns, they had, uh, comments, questions. We made changes from year one to year two. And then these final articles were sent to the State Board of Education, and they were approved in December of two thousand and ten. I'm not gonna go into details of them right now, because of time allotment, this could take a while. I do have copies of the Articles Agreement and also of the seven oh six B. Also, an aside, Act one fifty-three, some of the information about that. If anyone would like a copy, you're more than welcome to get them. And if there's time afterwards, I'd be happy to answer any questions or speak to you individually about them. So what does this mean? As Mel said, when you try to merge something, something's gonna go up and something's gonna go down. That's a lot of averages. There's really no way around it when you have, when you're averaging something together. But if you take a look at this, again, that Unified Union figure is twelve thousand seven seven six. The excess spending threshold that the state puts out is fourteen thousand five hundred? Um, so we're still well below that. Um, and if anyone follows the way you have to come up with your vote, your budgets and your voting, or your, uh, yeah, your budget figures, uh, there are a lot of hoops to jump through, but the, the spending threshold, that fourteen thousand five hundred is the most, is one of the most important figures to watch for. If you go to the next slide, this talks about the taxes. I know that Mel's already done some of my work for me. Thank you, Mel. Um, when we get to the tax rate, when we say that future changes throughout the district um, would not fluctuate as dramatically, it's because, like Mel said, if the student count is greater, you have, um, and you lose students, you have, it's less likely that it'll affect your cost per pupil and therefore your tax rate. So if your base is bigger, you don't have quite a fluctuation. If you only have two hundred students and you lose fifteen of them, the cost per pupil change is going to be large. If you have twelve hundred students and you lose twenty-five students, it's not the same. It's not gonna make quite as much of a difference. And also, also as Mel pointed out, um, this, none of this takes into account CLA for all of your towns. So how does that compare? Now, you've already seen this slide, um, and what I wanna point out, um, with what Mel did say about the card, um, that's based on the Unified Union figure. And based on the Unified Union figure, the one-thirty is the figure we're looking at. If we, if the state did not recognize, and they did very nicely, I think, recognize that with the law of averages, something's gonna come up, something's gonna come down, it's gonna hurt. So instead of making it go from four Virgin's, Hampton and Walton, jump up that, uh, well, in Virgin's, it's gonna jump up seven cents in the first year and stay seven cents throughout all those five years, um, they recognized that, and they said, here, we're gonna help you out. We're gonna let you take five years to get to that point. If you look, think about that other slide that Mel put up there that said, basically, you're gonna be paying eighty-five thousand dollars, maybe, what was it, eighty-five thousand dollars more? Well, what if you're paying that eighty-five thousand dollars from year one? Which is what would really happen, which is what really should happen without this incentive. So, you're definitely, I, I can't say your taxes from day one of the Unified Union will be less. Of course, you get, someone's gonna go up and someone's going through down. But what you can't lose sight of is the goal. And the goal is to get these kids unified. Get these kids all on a level playing field, to provide the best education, to band together, to be bigger, so that we not lose some of these smaller schools and programs at these smaller schools. And any of, I shouldn't, and, and when I say smaller schools, I'm not, not talking about the smaller school. We're all smaller schools, because when we stand alone of only two hundred students, three hundred students, we're much smaller than that twelve hundred. Go ahead. So what does all this mean? And why do we have to be a UU to do it? I think we pretty much explained that. We have a declining student population, very small, standalone boards and government system, which can definitely lead to increasing student costs, because that cost per pupil's gonna rise. With increasing costs, you very easily have declining programming. And by forming a UU, it is the unanimous opinion of the elected board officials that we will become a prepaid through twelve system, one district. It'll be a smaller governance structure that will be more efficient, and we will hope to preserve the program here. We wanna make the choice to do it here. Just as a recap, we're five communities working together. We are five communities of schools, five communities of children that are feeding into one, one, uh, middle and senior high school. These kids deserve to get their, their EDA on the same playing field, they deserve to work together. Um, and we feel by having one board and one budget, we're gonna be leaner, more efficient. We can stabilize those tax rates between each of the towns. And really, nothing goes away, except the school town lines. I wanna make that clear. We're not getting rid of all town lines, we're just getting rid of those school town lines. And we're going to have, you know, less bureaucratic waste. We feel there are, there are schools, there are children, it's our choice to do it now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Two hours of prayers, thank you very much. Um, gonna remind people of ground rules, because I had some people come in, uh, after we started the meeting. I'd asked you to allow the citizens of Virgin's to ask their questions first. Um, I'd asked you to raise your hand to be recognized by myself. And once you get done, I want you to stand, recu- uh, state your name, after your name, address your question to the entity that you wanna pose the question to. And at the end of that, uh, you start your question, we're gonna start the timer. Uh, I had both Mel and, or excuse me, I had both Lowell and, and Joel as my timers. Okay? So, open it up for questions. Uh, I can't see the lady in the back, but she's got black sweater on.
Hi. Um, my name is Susan Furland. I live in Virgin's, I've lived here for twenty-four years. And I was a former teacher at Lincoln Community School, which is a very small school, smaller than Addison taught there, in these twelve fifty rooms. Um, my question, I'm directed towards our superintendent, Mr. Bryan. And I'm referring to an article written by the Commissioner of Education, which was just posted, April two thousand and eleven, um, the National Schools Association, so this is.
You, you said your question was for who?
Mr. Bryan.
Questions go to the presenters.
Okay, go to Mr. Bryan.
You wanna go through the presenters.
Well, then I'll direct it to the presenter and hope that they can answer the question. In this article, again, written by our commissioner, referring to Act one fifty-three, he states that there are many supervisory unions within Vermont that have fewer than half of students. And of these, we have a total of two hundred and seventy-seven district school boards, including many that operate schools with fewer than a hundred students. Then he goes on to say in his article that if we could merge some of those districts to get.
that if we could merge some of those districts together, that the savings would be 20 million a year. So that would be an example of taking our district and merging it. And I'm not saying that we should do this. I'm just saying that this is what is being proposed in this article. I am, um, I was about to...
You have about 10 seconds left.
Right. To, to merge with either Addison Northeast or merge with the Middlebury District.
Thank you.
And I'd like to know more about that. Well, I'm not sure I got really where you're going with your question. If you think that, if your question is that, do we think that you will save that much money? Is that the question? Or is it...
My question is, why are we exploring a bigger merger that would potentially save us more money?
Why aren't we trying to do that? Well, what we feel is, look what we're trying to do here. We're trying to merge five, uh, four schools who've been working together for years and years and years. It's not an easy process. We, we recognized years ago that this is the way we want to do the business here at this supervisory union. We merged our teachers contract 38 years ago, I think. We merged our court staff contract eight years ago. We are, I would say, 90% close to be running the way the Unified Union works. Other districts are not the same. A lot of districts have recently been forced to merge their teacher contracts. And if you think merging tax rates is tough, try merging teacher contracts, because that was harder than those. So I, in my opinion, is this is the first step. And it would be very, very difficult to take, to do it all at once.
Other question, gentleman in the room, sure?
My name's Nelson Sears, I'm a citizen of Virgens. My question is for our city manager, Phil Hawley. Thank you for that work, first of all, and those charts, it was very helpful. To help keep me even more informed, it would be helpful to have you just talk about what, if the city of Virgens was not unified, if we were to continue going on the same path, knowing that the student population's going to drop, how is that going to impact our taxes over that same period?
Non-unified versus unified?
Yeah, I got the non-unified, I got the unified picture and with all the cuts. What I don't have is the other side of the equation. If, if we're not unified and we have a much smaller student population and we, we do see those trends, which are nationwide, we've known for a long time, in education, how's that going to impact our tax rate over that same period?
Okay, let me, let me first off tell you, Nelson, that I am the city manager and I've ne- never written a school budget in my life, alright? So I am not the maker of school budgets, alright? So for you to ask me a question about, you know, what's, what's the school budget going to look like next year without unification? I don't have a clue because I'm not, I don't work for the school district. But I will answer the, but I will attempt to answer your question. I put a chart up there that showed per pupil cost at Addison Central of a little over $15,000. Per pupil cost at Ferrisburg Central of about $13,000. And per pupil cost at Virgens Union Elementary at $11,000, $11,000. And when you, obviously, at the Union High School, we are already unified. All five towns already send all of their kids to the Union High School. So unification, I don't want to say that it has no effect, in my opinion, on the high school. But I, my, I'm going to say that it has very little effect from a math standpoint because all five towns are already sending their kids to that school. Relative to the unification of the three elementary schools, if you do the simple math of saying, okay, there's X number of kids at $15,000 attending Addison Central, X number of kids going to Ferrisburg Central at $13,000, and X number of kids going to Virgens Union Elementary at $11,000, to feel that, to project that the city will be better o- better off on a per pupil basis, joining with Ferrisburg and Se- Ferrisburg and Addison. I could run the math, and I actually did today. The per pupil cost for the Virgens Union Elementary School would have to go up 17.9%, alright? For it to start becoming an advantage to joining Addison and Ferrisburg.
Over the 17.9%?
That's, you know, the point is, is that right now, the, right now, the per pupil cost that Virgens taxpayers benefit from is driven by the per pupil cost at Virgens Union Elementary School. When you put in the, the kids at Addison and the kids at Ferrisburg into that formula and aggregate them, the, the increase in the, in the per pupil cost above the current $11,000 would have to go up by 17, more than 17.9%. If the other two schools stayed the same, the Virgens Union Elementary School would have to go up more than 17.9% for there to be an advantage to joining with those two schools.
That I understand. I, I don't, my question hasn't been answered.
I'm not going to, I can't answer your question about next year.
You are answering it on the unification side, but I'm not getting the information. Okay, 17 point, another way of saying the question maybe, and I don't know who to address it to, who, who the experts are here, but, so I'll just put it out there if I may. What is that going to look like? If you're saying 17.9, over the next five years of Virgens Elementary School without unification, do we know that it's going to remain under 17.9% increase over the course of five years? Or is that going to go up?
I can't answer that question.
Can someone answer it?
We need to move on to the next question. Okay? Christian, did you want to try to attempt to respond to that?
Well, the only thing I can say is, is it, like you've said, it's based on budget and cost and cost per pupil, number of students. We do know that, I don't know specific numbers, that Virgens Elementary, I know the fifth grade is very large. And once that goes, we have, not have enough kindergarten students coming in. So in two years, we will definitely see a decline at the elementary school. Also, I know the budgets have gone together very smoothly at Virgens Elementary and Elementary School based on natural attrition. Because teachers leave, we have lower student count, we don't need as many teachers, so therefore we haven't had to rehire. That's a very easy way to keep your budget low. When that, when that stops, and, and you have the cost per pupil going up, it'll change. So it's, there's no guarantee there.
That, that method of attrition is not...
Excuse me? Christian has to be the one to do the answering. Okay? One person's balking. We're only allowing the presenters to do the responding. This is not about debate people. This is about information. We're here to share information. So let's try to keep it to the key people that are doing presenting. Okay? Thank you. Questions?
Well, as a Virgens taxpayer, or leader, what, Mel, Ashley and, and the other girl, the presenter, how, what's the chances that you really think that these people, the budgets are ever going to be cut for the schools? I mean, we know Virgens is going to go up to carry these other people. But is there any chance, and heck, I should say, that any of these budgets, we always vote the budgets and the odds go off, blah, 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 that they're going to be able to level those budgets or cut some costs?
Well, in the last two years, uh, two years ago, we lev- completely leveled up in our budgets. And this, this year, the budget that you just voted on was, in all the schools, was about 2% to 3% less than the first year before. And the next year, we're looking at up, doing the same thing. So we've already started to do that.
Next question? Mr. Parker, Representative...
Representative, Representative, Chris, thank you for your work on this and everybody who's worked on the committee for years. I don't know how you guys have to stand there and do it, but you have, and thank you. As tough as it is for any legislator, it will only take two minutes. Let me get right to the, uh, my question. There seems to be concern in at least one of the details. And because I talked to Tom O'Brien yesterday, I got a, uh, I, I felt a little bit better about the fact that this had at least been discussed. And here's the, the point. It seems to me this is a big deal. This is not six and one, half doesn't have enough. So when you're putting together, joining assets and liabilities and you're starting at, let's call it a dollar, it seems to me that people that have concerns about their particular school jumping in with folks who may very well have a bigger liability, that they have a legitimate concern. Now, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't at the meetings where you discussed it. If you did, I'm wondering if you're willing to, how was it that we didn't change the articles to include that? Or, or talk to me about it afterwards? But it seems to me that's a legitimate concern on the part of people who are concerned, no matter what school they're at.
So you're asking, why are we only saying it for a dollar?
Yes, and it doesn't seem to mean that...
So instead of having the millions or whatever transferred back and forth?
Well, it seems to me the concern is not over the fact that whether we ought to consolidate, that seems to make sense. But if somebody's got a million dollar asset and they're joining forces with somebody that's got a million dollars in the deficit that they're all going to have to pay for, they're concerned. And I don't know if that question has been answered to their satisfaction. But since I know who talked it, I mean, I think you considered it. What was your, what was your thought of that, or is that...
Well, I, currently, the, the schools own the buildings. So Virgens Union High School is owned by Virgens Union High School. We have five towns who have stakeholders in that building. So really, all five towns own that building. That's an easy one. Everybody already owns it. Same in, in Virgens, the Union High, the Union Elementary Schools owned by three, three towns. They already own it. Now, the other ones are standalone. So you can say the town of Addison owns it. But technically, the school owns it. So if they, I guess our feeling is, if you merge them, they all, they all become the property of the Unified Union. To try to figure out assets and what town has to pay what town and, and actually exchange money, gets very complicated. The upflip side of that is if a town ends up voting out or, you know, the Unified Union votes them out, a school, building is no longer used for education purposes, the same thing. It will go back to the town for that dollar. It's the, the dollar, you know, that doesn't actually exchange.
Chris, may I tell them about Michael or not?
Uh, we still have time. Okay.
Uh, just quickly, Chris, thank you. And that's why I knew that you had talked about it and I wanted you to get that out. Is there enough, in the meantime, isn't it possible that the, uh, the towns are going to be asking, being asked to kick in more money? Am I understanding that right? So that if somebody's got a liability, that you will in fact include that in, in, in the Unified Union? Okay.
Yep. Way to, it's all then taken account, into account when we look at tax rates, cost per pupil and all of those things. But remember the goal. The goal is the education for our students. And is it better to share in somebody's asset and liabilities and make sure that all of our students are educated in the same way and hit the seventh grade at the same way? Or is it better to snag over who's paying what?
Next question, I'm going to go to the people that are talking to me first. Jay?
I'm Jayce, that's all, I'm a school counselor for the middle school. So I see all these seventh graders that come to us. And I can just reiterate what Chris is saying about differences coming from different schools. So it'd be great to be able to level that playing field a little bit. But it's not my question, but. But I follow what Greg was saying in that I know one of the biggest concerns is that Ferrisburg has a big bond out there and we don't want it to take on that debt. I've heard a number of people mention that, it's a big concern. So my question is, will the elementary school ever need to do that? And wouldn't it be great to have Ferrisburg and Addison and everyone else joining in and helping us pay for that bond? It seems like we need to not be so selfish and think longer term and then know that over time, these things are going to even out. Tax rates are going to go up. We're living in a fantasy world if we're thinking they're not going to go up. At some point, they're going to fluctuate all of that. So why not come together as a five-town community? We see it at the high school. Let's do it at our elementary schools too. So my question is, is that, it just seems like that's something that we need to be thinking about. So I don't, it actually doesn't matter to me who answers that, but I think we...
Well, as far, I mean, as far as we're concerned, that's, that's a big reason why we want to merge. As be and, you know, just get on with it. And you're, and absolutely, the Virgens Elementary School might need work someday. The Addison School might need work someday. The high school, as great as that building is, that addition now is old. That may need some work sometime.
Yeah, just to follow up on the, the big disparity in the Ferrisburg school with the big debt. Well, we have no debt in the, you know, elementary. My understanding way back when we first voted on this was that whatever debt they had, their people were going to have to absorb it. And then come, they come into the union. Now, that was my understanding of it.
Not the debt, the debt. The debt that is on the building and work on the building because the asset will move into the Unified Union. The liability on the building also comes to the Unified Union and it's shared by everybody. Because we share those assets well. You know, those buildings would then be owned, technically owned by the Unified Union, which is all five towns.
Yeah, but so Virgens would have to end up paying more to cover this. The taxpayers of Virgens are going to end up paying more over time according to what Mel was saying.
Well, they will initially. But then, like Jayce said, if the Virgens Union Elementary School all of a sudden needed something, you know, a 15, I don't know, million dollars, something or other, I'm not even going to make a guess. But if they needed it, then all the towns are going to help pay for that as well.
The gentleman in the room, sure?
My name's Chris Robinson, I'm from Virgens also. Real, two real simple questions. One was, I saw a change that you're going from pre-K to 12. Is that something...
It's not going to change. We do have a pre-K system.
We do, okay, I was not aware of that. And the second one was, you said that there's no town lines, school town lines anymore. And we're talking about sharing debt and everything else. Now, if I happen to live in Ferrisburg, which I don't, over by the Shaw supermarket, and my kids can walk to Virgens, does that mean then that my kids can go to Virgens School instead of going to a school taking a bus?
If, guidelines, that is, the answer to that, the simple answer is yes. Guidelines have now been set up. As soon as the Unified Union Board would start meeting, we'd come up with some kind of guidelines. Because obviously, students aren't going to go to one school one year, another school another year. But we can certainly figure out how you can do that. And the reason why you can do it is you are all one school. As a, you're one school housed in three different places. Currently, if you wanted to do that, you'd have to pay tuition to Virgens. As a Ferrisburg resident, you'd be paying tuition to Virgens even though you aren't paying taxes to your Ferrisburg school.
So if I was a, if I was a resident of Virgens and I moved to Addison and my, and my child was in the elementary school, he wants to stay in the elementary school, then...
That would, that would be a perfect space, and that would be a simple, thank you, yeah.
The lady in the back row with glasses?
Uh, my name is Betsy, I live in Virgens. Um, kind of, I'm, I'm interested also in hearing some more examples of specifics of how, you're, you're talking about equalizing education. And so how, because, and how, what are some examples of how that would be done at every elementary school? I'm not talking about just the different flavors. I mean, I'm not worried about, um, you know, different functions that each thing, you know, school comes up with. But I'm talking about really looking at educational programs and making sure that those are equal. So how would that...
Yeah, well, this question, I'm aware, and you always gets me into trouble because if I give a specific example, then somebody always says, you're going to do well. But what we're looking at is if we can share teachers, if, if one school has an enrichment in math, another school has a great reading recovery program, another school has a great band, and, and maybe a school doesn't have a band. Maybe that other school doesn't have reading recovery or a good reading recovery program. Our hope would be that we can use maybe the same personnel and travel to the schools. This is what gets me in trouble, if I mention moving children. But I, I think it's a fair thing to say. If these kids want the same opportunities, we'll figure out how to do that. Those are just a couple of examples of what I'm looking at from the outside. But we'll know more once we even start. But we'll know more once we get started.
Before we will end, ready to ask, I have a question to answer. So, your backside, ready?
Actually, it's more of a statement than a question.
Oh, no. Oh, are we allowed to take some of that?
Yes.
It's... You've got two minutes.
Thank you. My question, or my statement is, is that, as you know, I'm a small business owner in this community. And any type of increase in this community or in the surrounding communities through farmers, people who run truck farms, stuff like that, the increase in that property taxes are going to adversely affect my clients and myself. So this unification doesn't make sense if I have to pay more on the short term or even on the long term. I would rather go at our own and keep our things the way they are until it can be really proved with an actual plan what a unified budget's going to look like, what a unified, where their cost savings are going to come from, negotiated contracts or ideas of new contracts. Then I would probably get over it. But at this point now, all I see is that the very little income that I do make is going to get even smaller by somebody else reaching into our pockets.
Okay? Ready? Go to you.
Leslie Donnelly from Virgens. I have more of a technical question, I guess. Currently, there's separate school boards plus the Addison Northwest District Board. I'm not quite sure from what you've said, is there only going to be one board totally?
Yes.
So how is the Northwest District Board, which we've never had to be able to vote on directly, how is that going to be incorporated into this single board? How is that money going to be dealt with?
Well, that money currently is allocated back to each of the schools. And then you come to that school rate, and so that is already in those school budgets.
Right, I understand that. But how is that going to be dealt with?
So it would all be incorporated the same.
And that's in the formula that you put up there?
It's in, when we say we've added all those budgets together, it includes that Addison Northwest budget because that goes, that's allocated to these schools. So Addison's school's budget takes their portion of the Addison Northwest budget.
I have to tell you, I voted for this both times. And Ziggy came to us and, you know, said, "I think there's some concerns here." And after this meeting, I think there's even more, and I don't know what to do anymore. I do believe they have good numbers. Mel is a numbers person, he knows it backwards and forwards. And I understand the need to do something that would reduce, hopefully, in the end, reduce taxes. I'm not quite sure now, after this presentation, how that's really possible. And in the long term, when I was in Patton when we unified with Virgens Elementary School, and there was a payment made from Patton and Waltam into the school district to get that in, to get whatever the bonds were out. We had, there was a purchase of that. So I understand where this other bond, the bond issues, have always been a question that we've asked. So I don't understand if it was done that way one time, why that isn't being incorporated this time.
Well, that's a little bit of a different scenario. Because you, those, the Patton and Waltam were already going to that school. It's different, I wasn't here at that time. But when you made a union, it's a union school versus a Unified Union. So we're merging rather than buying into it. You know, it's not like the elementary schools are going to buy into the high school or anything like that. So that's all I can say, is it's just a different scenario. You know, the only thing I can say to you, Lynn, is, I mean, Mel did have great numbers. And sure, if we unified, we'll write to that Unified Union rate. I understand that that would be incredibly difficult. And that's why I say this helps us out. But what you also have to understand is standing alone with a population of 250 students potentially going down on a regular basis, you still have to run the building. You still have to, you know, pay your teachers. Yeah, you can start losing teachers, but when you start losing teachers, you start losing program. And there's no guarantee that your taxes aren't going to go up even higher without you. If I could stand here today and guarantee, even with unification, without unification, I would be a very lucky and very rich woman if I could guarantee all of those things. And I understand you have to want, you have to make your best decision. And all I can tell you is, those of us who have been joining us for a very long time continue to believe we can make it an even better system than it is today.
Going to go to Cheryl and Alex?
The Virgens Union Elementary School budget is extremely low right now. The numbers that you saw from Mel are extremely low numbers. And those low numbers are a number of years of cuts, 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 teacher retirements, and they're not replaced. It's not sustainable. If we're going to keep the programs that we have in place, when the number's going down, our budgets are going up, and our taxes will go up in Virgens. To say that, you know, everything is the same, well, everything's not staying the same, and that's why we're here. Everything is going up, our student population is going down, the costs are going up, our building is aging, and it is only going to go up from here. And nobody can say, "Well, it's going to go up in five years." I'd love to see what the projections are for five years without unification because I don't think, I think they're going to go much higher. Our budget a couple of years ago was higher in Virgens than it is right now. My taxes from two years ago were a dollar 286 on my home. This is just the homestead education. Our taxes flushway, up and down. And this 123 is an incredibly low number that I haven't seen in many years. CLA does its number on taxes that we are having control over. To have this entire thing boil down to that tax graph, it saddens me because there are bigger issues here than just that tax rate. That tax rate could change no matter what we do. Our taxes are probably going to go up in five years. It seems unusual that they would stay the same. They're going to go up anyway. But this is our opportunity to share the resources that we do have.
Ten minutes, ten seconds.
Make everything stable so that when we lose those kids in a couple of years, we're not going to go, "Oh, man, I wish we knew more about them." This is the way to go. We force consolidation, we should take this opportunity ourselves to do it while we have tax incentives.
I apologize if you've already addressed this, and if still Mel maybe can answer privately for me later. But I'm confused about the procedure tonight because it seems the petitioners are Ziggy and Mel.
No, we're not, they're presenters.
Okay, I guess I'm just confused because the city council is going to be sitting here on one side.
We're not sitting here.
Okay, it's just, it's a little confusing exactly because it seems that the city council is here, Ziggy presented, and so I'm confused about who's running this? Why is the city council running it? Could Mel, since you were a presenter, that you may be addressed, why?
Well, first off, I can answer that part of your question. When the Virgens graded school district decided to dissolve legally, what it did is it actually put the city council in the school business. They are, the city council is the Virgens School District. And they just became that way. And when the petition was, when there was a petition for a revote, it's the city council that adopts a warning for that special meeting, right? So you need to kind of think about these folks as being your town's school board now. That's legally, that is what happened.
I guess, so there's a Virgens Union Elementary School, there's a Virgens Union High School school board, and there's a city council school board?
Yes, and to tell you the truth, there's a Waltam school board that no longer exists now, but they dissolved. But actually, there is. The select board of Waltam is now the town's school board of Waltam. The Ferrisburg Central still has a, still has a school board because they have a school to operate. So, yes, you know, it is a little weird for the city council to be in the school business, but they are, they became in the school business by default when the Virgens graded school district dissolved.
So then, just to follow up. Ziggy, are you, you presented or you petitioned as a private citizen or as a city council? So is there any conflict of interest where somebody who's on the school board should be recusing themselves if they're petitioning?
There's been, there's been no, there's been no position ever made by the city council.
So you're the school board, but you're not taking a position on the issue either?
The city council certainly can take a position, but the city council has never taken a position as adopting some motion or resolution on unification.
Clear as mud.
What's that?
Clear as mud. So, did I see your hand?
I was just going to, I'm suburban, I live in Virgens. I just had a quick question because they're talking about equal education in all the schools. I just, I've been out of this, my kids are grown, so could you tell me, is there a unified curriculum that each school follows that they need to send to the high school?
We've been working on a unified curriculum.
But they don't, like Addison's not required to follow the same curriculum as Virgens, as Ferrisburg?
We're getting to a equalized curriculum. Lots of the areas are fairly equal. But when it comes to things like reading recovery, it comes to things like math, you know, accelerated math, sort of the basics may be equal, but the extras may be not. And if some, if some kids are getting accelerated math, all kids should really get a chance at accelerated math. Some kids are getting a better reading recovery so that they're actually in a better, you know, a better place when they hit the seventh grade, all of them should be getting it.
All right, so I guess I still don't understand what, I mean, I don't understand the answer. Is there in place now a unified curriculum?
Is it in place across all the, across everywhere? Eighty-five percent.
What does that mean?
Well, it means that it's not a hundred percent. It's not a hundred, right now, it's not a hundred percent the same age of the elementary schools. Schools can do it because they, you know, we drive.
No, I didn't, no, I just...
If they can't afford to buy new books, well, then they're probably not going to switch to that math program. Or if they can't afford a reading recovery teacher, then they don't have a reading recovery program.
Okay, thank you.
Chris?
Chris, is there any reason that the math teacher or the reading enrichment teacher can't be employed of the Northwest Supervisory District and of ten all-three schools?
Yeah, if they do it that way, then they're actually hired by each of the individual schools, and they would be considered part-time each of the schools, and each of the schools is ready to have a check. They cannot be considered full-time, full-time. They could possibly be by the Addison Northwest, some of these, some people are. But then again, as Lynn pointed out, that budget is not voted Australian ballot. So that, you know, if we start putting all of those people into the Addison Northwest budget and sending them to all these schools, we're going to have to have to do that through campus. We do have to do that sometimes because of grant funding and so forth. But the answer is, it's not. Yes, it's possible, but it's not, it's not sustainable. And that person cannot be a full-time. And if you have that here, that from here, could you get the benefits? That kind of thing.
I have a, way back when this all started, we all got together and was presented a plan of trying to save money. One of the things that came out, that kept coming out, is that, as you were saying, that all our students are dropping. But yet, we cannot, we cannot close a school. And it seems to me that if we have three schools and we have all these students that are dropping, why are we keeping? And I know there has been a rule or a law that got passed, and that we cannot close any schools. Why did that happen? I mean, how all of it? They wanted us to consolidate, they wanted us to be, we wanted to save money. But then the next year, we find out all of a sudden, we couldn't close any schools. I was for this in the beginning. And nothing against Addison, but like you're saying, every year, these students are dropping. Yet, we're going to have to keep all these schools open. That is very expensive. When can we get off on that, and when can we actually start swinging saving money? Where our hands are tied. And that really, really bothered me and bothered a lot of other people because I was for this in the beginning. But now, we have all these rules and regulations that we have to go by.
Well, and I would say the flip side of that, and that the reason the state did that is because you have a lot of small schools who are scared of what you're saying. They don't want to close. They're a small family school, and they don't want to close. And that's why the state implemented something like that.
And I understand that, but the point is, our students are dropping. And somehow, the state and the law is going to have to wake up here. They want us to do our job, they want to save money, we've got to do something. And when is this going to be, when is this going into the next step? I mean, when is it, 2017, 18? When will it ever be? Or can we have forty students in one school, and we still have to take care of them? Is there anything that we can look ahead to?
Well, I think it says by town. I don't think it says, there's actually no, I can't, I don't remember exactly what it says.
Five years.
One person speaking, please. I've got Jayce Stetzel, and then the lady in the black sweaters, Dr. Jane.
I think I forgot to mention earlier, I do live in Virgens, so my taxes will be going up if they go up. But I just want to bring this back. I appreciate that people are asking questions about curriculum and things like that because that's about the students. I want to go back to what Chris said at the beginning, this is about the students. And we don't know if our taxes are going to go up or down, or we unify or don't unify. We can look at all the numbers we want. And I just, I urge you to keep in mind the students when you're voting. And I guess the question I would ask is to Mel. Mel, can you guarantee that if we don't unify, the taxes won't go up on small businesses like Randi's, on individuals, things like that? Can you guarantee that?
I cannot guarantee, I already said, Jay, that I don't write school budgets.
And that doesn't matter, we can't guarantee that.
Mike, can I, I think you're allowing presenter to ask.
You can do that.
Okay. I want to read this one more time. It says, "In the first four years of unification, Virgens taxpayers will see reduced education tax rates. In future years, tax rates would stabilize due to economies of scale." Two questions. I'd like to know who wrote this. And number two, I'd like to know how people like yourself, Chris, if you had anything to do with writing this, which went into everybody's mailbox, which basically states that Virgens taxpayers in the first four years are going to see reduced taxes, when tonight at this meeting, we're hearing that that's not the case.
That is the case. Based on unification, in the first four years, the tax rate will be eight cents, six cents, four cents, and two cents less than the Unified Union rate. So those first four years of unification, your rate will be less than what the Unified Union rate should be.
It doesn't say based on unification.
It says in the first four years of unification.
Yes. It says in the first four years of unification, Virgens taxpayers will see reduced education tax rates. It doesn't say reduced education tax rates from the unified rate. It says reduced education tax rate. Do you think that this is, you think that this is clear that it tells people that their taxes are going up?
Yeah, maybe we could have made it more clear, but it does say based on the unification.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
I skipped over, let Mel jump in front of that, we get a black sweater.
That's okay, and I just wanted to, I guess, piggyback on, Ziggy. I think that, yes, we need to do something in Vermont about the tax rate. I think our commissioner realizes, our commissioner of education realizes we need to do something about the tax rate. He is proposing not to go little, but to go bigger because that's where the savings is. We're not going to save anything. In Virgens, we're not saving a dime or paying more. And as a taxpayer who did not get raised this year, whose husband's contract settled for less, my child's college education continues to go up, and we're paying it, we're not getting loans, I can't afford it. I want to know why we aren't looking at going bigger, cutting out a superintendent's office. That's where the money is saved. Right now, you can order technology as a group if you want to. You can order technology or books altogether if you want to. I worked in a school district, I know that. You can do that. I don't see where you're going to save any money. And I'd like to know, if our commissioner is asking us to look bigger, and then his final statement is that we still need to study this, that it's not time to make rash decisions, why we're pushing ahead when there's so many questions? why we're pushing ahead when there's so many questions? I don't understand.
Any response?
I feel like I answered that question before. I feel like we're taking that first step here. If we were to be forced to unify with, say, Bristol District, this nightmare that is this big right now would be history. Except, we're not being forced, we're being asked, we're making the choice to do what we feel is best for our students and their education. I understand that there are, it's not a smooth thing, I understand there's give and take, but what we feel is the best thing for students is what we're proposing. And as we come to unified union, I think to try and merge and be forced to merge with another district could be a lot more painful. But I don't think anyone's forcing you, I think people are saying, "Where's the savings?" Well, the savings will be realized once we get started. I mean, there are certain things like audits, auditing. Audits, you only can do one. An audit might take us a little more than one particular one we have, but we don't have to do five. There's savings right there. We can take a little less of that.
Y'all set? Eric Hughes, y'all set? I'm all set, thanks. See you.
I just have a question, and it may be rhetorical, but my question is, when we think about our students and the issues that have come up in unification, saving money out transportation, saving these kids, well, helping them to be, come into our high school on a unified level playing field, what would happen if we were to merge with a school in Bristol or Middlebury? What would happen to transportation? What would happen to the kids' feeling of security and belonging to a school system that they have known and grown to trust? So that is my question.
Christian, do you wanna respond to that?
I don't know if that is a question that needs to be.
It's a rhetorical question.
People, I have eight-thirty. I wanna thank the presenters for doing their job, and I wanna thank everyone for indulging my game rules. Hopefully, you have got some additional information that will help you when you go to the polls on May 17th. I will adjourn this hearing.